Thank you. All right. The Common Council of the City in Glendale is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Captain Fugman's gonna lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmousling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Alderman Doherty is expected. He texted me a few minutes before the meeting. All right, first item is public comment. And for our first person in public comment, I happened to be in a meeting earlier today where Jerry Duchesne, who is the head of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, was there giving a report on the shared revenue bill. And I said, Jerry, you're gonna be around Milwaukee for a little bit. Would you like to come and give the presentation at Glendale? Because I would have covered it in my report at the end of the meeting. But Jerry will give us a far better explanation of what's in the shared revenue bill. So Jerry, I'd like to ask you to step up there and, and talk with us about how the legislature is gonna help us.
I heard that, Alder. Good evening and thank you very much, everyone. First of all, Mayor, could I get a note from you to my wife? Because when you said silence your cell phones, I accidentally called her. And then I, I immediately hung up on her. So I have some explaining to do. A little bit of official help might, might go a long way. Forgive me. I will, I will try to be very, very brief in giving you an overview of a 133-page document that is changing by the hour. And I'll, out of respect for your time and the time of the others who have business with you, I'll keep my comments fairly brief, but I'll be here as long as you have questions for me. I believe you can ask questions of me.
You can.
Public comment, okay. The state legislature, specifically the state assembly, has introduced a bill to provide what would be the biggest increase in local government aid from the state in a generation. What they're doing is proposing to take one cent, 20% of the existing state sales tax, and dedicate that in a non-lapsable fund to local governments. Out of that penny, you would draw shared revenue, you draw expenditure restraint, you draw your computer aid payment, personal property tax backfill, and a number of other things. In terms of new money, because otherwise this is just a shell game, in terms of new money, they're looking at approximately a 28% increase in shared revenue. And how much each municipality gets varies quite widely. I believe the city is in line for about a two and, one and a half times doubling and then some.
A 160% increase.
Thank you. Whereas contrast with Milwaukee, Milwaukee is slated to see a 10% increase. Dollar amounts are much bigger, but slated to see a 10% increase. There would also-
We go from 205,000, we get an additional 330,000 on top of that.
And then the other key to remember is the way this is structured is it would grow with inflation. It would grow as state sales tax grows. There's $300 million in one-time grants to encourage service consolidations. The mayor and I will debate all night long whether it's structured properly or not. It probably could be better, but it's a good start. They would double the grants that the state issues for police training budgets. There would also be an increase in EMS funding. I just described at a very high level what goes on for pages and pages and pages. There are strings attached to this money. The state will expect you to maintain your current level of police and fire service as measured in a variety of different ways. What else did I want to hit before I take your question? This all starts beginning July 1st of 2024. So when you're building your 2024 budget, stay, stay in touch with the league so that we can let you know if this does or does not pass. But they're planning to start this July 1st of 2024. Right now, this is an assembly proposal. As you know, you're how a bill becomes a law from grade school. This has to go through the state senate and then be signed into law by the governor. We're not there yet. In fact, there was a public hearing last week in the assembly where the governor issued a statement a half an hour before saying he would veto the bill if it came to him in its current form. The bill is not going to get to the governor in its current form. There will be changes. We're currently working with them on most changes and a lot of other interest groups are working on the changes too. I can speculate all night long, if you like me to, on what those changes will be. Not quite sure about all of them. But I also believe there is a lot of desire on the part of the governor and leaders in both houses, both Republicans and Democrats, to get this done. The one thing I want to compliment all of you on is legislators know there's a problem at the local level. They know that they need to increase the level of support for local governments. Obviously, they are particularly interested in helping you when it comes to law enforcement, fire protection, EMS, other critical services of that nature. So that is an overview. If you have some specific questions, I'd be glad to try to respond to them.
I'll open up now to members.
Or of a, of a comment than a, than a question, but Senator Chris Larson circulated something a couple of weeks or a couple of months ago now that, that showed the shared revenue back in 1993 was more than the shared revenue distributed by the state in like 2021 or something. I'm thinking, how, how could that possibly be? And, and the, the line was, it was just basically even across those, you know, couple of decades. And I guess the question is, what took so long?
Oh, that's a great question, Alder. The state has a lot of competing budget needs. The biggest, the biggest spending programs, aside from shared revenue, are school aides, Medicaid, corrections, and the university system and the vocational technical school system. Somewhere along the way, local government programming, police, fire, ambulance. Someone forgot that those were essential needs too. And what's been happening over the course of the last year is, is our members have been reminding the legislature of that. I, I will say this, I, I'm not gonna point a finger at either party because that 30 years of history, as you correctly point out, covers a number of different governors and a number of partisan majorities in the legislature. All I can tell you is that it has not been a priority for the legislature. It is a priority now.
Questions? Alderman Schmousling?
Oh, thank you for being here and staying away from your wife longer.
She's actually at a pottery class with our granddaughter, so.
Oh, okay, well.
It's just the butt dial that I have to apologize for.
So we've all done those calls. I, I know one of the things for Milwaukee, because what Hymn Pax, Milwaukee, Mex, Ocelot, and Glendale, is they're only seeing the 10%. And also, they are giving some flexibility to do their own sales tax, is what I understand. So just to get your perspective, what's the reason for the sliding scale of where some of the smaller municipalities get a $10,000 minimum? And then we have the larger and the largest doesn't really see much coming its way? When everyone sees the concerns they have for, you know, policing and, and other needs that they have?
That's an excellent question, Alder. And let me, let me start off with the small communities, those that are going to see a $10,000 minimum increase. Those are cities, villages, and towns that until this point may have been getting $500 in shared revenue, $2,000 in shared revenue. Basically, they couldn't buy a dump truckload of salt with that kind of money. And they did an effective job of making the point to the Wisconsin legislature that small communities in Wisconsin don't do well under the shared revenue formula. I think there will be further debate and perhaps further adjustment of what larger cities get. I don't think that issue is resolved yet. But the last thing I want to say on this is whether a formula is fair or not is in the eye of the beholder. You know, the league represents Big Falls population 59 and Milwaukee population, I forget how many hundred thousand. There's a huge spread in those municipalities. There's also a huge spread in the services that they provide. It's inherently more expensive to serve a citizen in Milwaukee than it is in Big Falls for a lot of different reasons. In this formula, they tried to bring the per capita payment together somewhat, but not a lot. And at the end of the day, it's also a matter of, we can't make it perfect, perfect. So what is politically good enough? There's also that going on.
I believe there's also an opportunity for the Milwaukee City and County to do a referendum for a sales tax increase as well.
Yes, that's absolutely separate sales taxes. And whether or not that actually is by referendum is one of the issues that's being debated.
That's good, thank you.
Vukovich?
I don't care if it's fair. I am a representative of Glendale. And we, nine times out of 10, a city like Glendale gets screwed over for the simple fact we have a population of a little over 13,000 people. But we have, what, 80,000 people that come into our city? Every single day. And that is, I talked to a senator today, I had breakfast with him and tried to get him, he's on the, the Republican side, and, and wanted to explain, not just talking to my reps, but other reps, that when you try to, like, discount Milwaukee County, because it's not just Glendale, it's, we are being kind of put together with Milwaukee County because of Milwaukee. In some ways, that Milwaukee goes down, this whole state's going down. And it's not, it's, so we have to do some, some real soul searching and thinking about not just our little place, because I'm always gonna think about my little place, but also the big picture, because again, if Milwaukee goes bankrupt in 2025, is it? It's not, Glendale's not gonna survive. A big, would you call it big? Whatever.
Big Falls.
Big Falls is not gonna survive, because they're not gonna get any of the revenue, because literally Milwaukee puts in more revenue than they get back. And they help the whole state. So I am, I'm, I'm kind of, and we definitely bring in, or put in more revenue than we get back. So I, I, there has to be somebody that, that thinks logically that this is not a partisan thing, and I'm saying this so it can be on the record. This is not a partisan thing right now. This is the livelihood of the state of Wisconsin. And this is what everybody should be yelling and, and screaming and going to their representatives, making sure that, okay, I don't care about the partisanship right now. I really need to make sure our state doesn't become bankrupt. Because as soon as Milwaukee, Milwaukee County does it, it's all the way across the state. And it'll take us years to rebuild. That's just my statement and putting it on the record.
Any other questions from members of the, yeah, go ahead, Alderman Schmousling, go ahead.
One of the other things I, I read in that, and you're definitely more in tune to it than I am, but the consolidation of services would allow for some additional funding back, kind of like the levy restraint program right now. We've done a lot in the North Shore, and I think the areas that we have left, you know, we'll continue to look for those opportunities, but I think we should be looking at what we're doing today. If there's any voice that you have where there is consolidated services to essentially get credit for that to some extent. Because if we were like a number of these other more rural communities and we'd have, you know, our own everything, then we would just be like any other 13,000-sized community. But because we're packed in with Milwaukee County and our North Shore neighbors that we partner with, we're already seeing those cost savings in a very urban area. So I think that's something that we should be getting, well, accolades for, not crippled in the future.
Heard me say this so many times. It is, it is.
Yeah, and, and for, for what it's worth, Alder, and, and the mayor made this point earlier as well. Actually, Wisconsin, many of Wisconsin's rural areas have the, have argued the same point. They would like some recognition, financial recognition, if you will, of consolidations, efficiencies, innovations that have already taken place. We were not able to bring that home. We pushed that point and legislators were simply unwilling to include some sort of credit for prior consolidation in the legislation. For a lot of reasons. It, it does get rather complicated. It's also begs the question of, okay, where do you draw that line? Do you draw it at a year, two years, five years, 10 years? Where do you draw that line? How do you value that? And on, I agree with you. And to a certain extent, it's somewhat frustrating. But at, at the end of the day, the, the whole package is more important than getting that piece perfect. And we weren't making any headway in those negotiations anyway.
Other questions?
I have a commercial before you kick me out.
Okay.
If, if you are available, I would urge each and every one of you to attend the league's Local Government Day in Madison on May 23rd. This is when we will be talking to the state legislature about moving this package. They're moving it fast. It'll probably go through the state assembly next week. But we doubt that it'll move through the senate quite that fast. But your voices are what's gotten this discussion to this point. And you can even come and make the point about past consolidations if you wish. But May 23rd, sign up on our website for Lobby Day. And we're, we need this to be a big turnout. This is the biggest lift, certainly in my career with the league. This, this is a big challenge and it's always, it's always hard to get the hard stuff done. And that's where your voices come into play. But I'd like to thank the mayor for offering me this opportunity. I had dinner just down the road. I forget the name of the place, but it was quite good, The Brick.
Oh.
And it was good. So I haven't lost a thing and I'll call my wife on the way home and we'll be good there too.
Well, Jerry, thank you so much for coming in. Thank you as well for all the work that you and the staff do in, in fighting for us in, in Madison on a regular basis. We, we do all get the, the league updates and, you know, so we see every week the things coming out of Madison that you guys are working on, and we really appreciate it. We know that, that the money we pay to the league every year comes back multifold in all the work that you do for us. So thank you.
Fine, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, we have with us tonight a, a group that is going to be presenting us with a fire suppression tool. There's a whole group of them, so I'm actually gonna ask to take one item out of order. And that would be to take item 5D, acceptance of a donation of a fire suppression tool to the Glendale Police Department. I'm gonna turn it over to Captain Fugman, and then we have a number of guests here as well, so. Sorry, you need to turn your microphone on. There we go.
In early March, Bob Skaterzinski, hope I pronounced that right, Bob, from the James M. Hayes Masonic Lodge in Wauwatosa, reached out to our department about donating a FST, which is a fire suppression tool. For those that aren't aware, it's a, you'll see shortly, it's a small little device that you pull the pins and it releases a powdered aerosol and can significantly reduce the temperature of a fire and ultimately put a fire out within 35 seconds. I've tested one myself a few years ago at a, at a demonstration. They're very valuable for first responders, particularly for law enforcement. When we're on the street, typically, first ones arrive on a scene of a fire. So when we received that, that offer, we definitely took them up on it. It's very generous. I know that they're doing that around the area, reaching out to other police departments in the area. And I will turn the floor over from members from the Masonic Lodge.
Whoever's gonna speak. Microphone, because we do have folks attending on the Zoom, and they won't be able to hear you unless you're talking into the mic. No, go right ahead. Yep, thank you, Mr. McGinn. Good to see you.
Just work here.
The, when you're speaking, you have to actually have it pretty close to you when you're speaking. You may actually need to hold it then if you're not gonna sit down. They're really kind of touchy mics. They have to be about six inches or eight inches from your face. And you gotta talk kind of directly into it, so if this, it doesn't catch you, so.
Good evening. I'm John Pettigrew, the worshipful master of James M. Hayes Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons. And as was mentioned, we're in Wauwatosa. And we're here to donate this fire suppression tool to the city of Glendale and its police department. Just to give you a short background of who we are. For decades, we were located on Green Bay Avenue, right across from Round Deer Park. Most all our brethren here were from the North Shore area. And as part of our charitable contribution and mission between both our lodge and the Grand Lodge of Wisconsin, we embarked on a mission this last year to put these fire suppression tools in communities throughout the state. There's about 300 of them we put out there now. And we've been focusing on the smaller ones and the ones who don't have these tools, unlike City Milwaukee, Madison, the large ones. And to give a description of how these work, what happens is, I understand, smaller communities, police are always on patrol. Fire call comes in. The police can usually arrive within two, three, maybe four minutes, followed up by the fire department five, seven minutes later. As anybody knows, when there's a fire, minutes count and seconds count. So when a police officer rolls up on the scene, he can assess the situation, have this already. And this is invaluable in smaller fires, typically in houses and apartment buildings, because they're made for smaller combined rooms or confined rooms. So what'll happen, he sees a fire, pulls a pin. Six or seven seconds later, it starts emitting an aerosol. It's like a one-shot fire extinguisher and it goes for 60 seconds. And the technology behind it, the way it works, this aerosol literally sucks the heat out of the air. It can cool the flames down 1,000 degrees. It prevents any of the combustible material from burning anymore. It just puts it out. So it's, although it's a suppression tool, it's actually, it puts the fire out. And by having this, most likely, a small fire can be put out by the time the fire department gets there, rather than having something out of control with the house that's totally gone. Not to mention if there's people in a room trapped, it could very well save a life. Because the beauty is this, it's not oxygen bleeding like a CO2 extinguisher. You can throw this in there, even though the aerosol cloud's still in there, once the fire suppresses, the heat's down, you could actually enter that room and extract any people that may have been in there or still are in there. They will not die from suffocation. It would actually be from whatever the application of the fire itself, fire.
Is that rechargeable and reusable then? Yeah.
Sort of. It is a one-shot device, okay. But what happens is the manufacturer and your instructions. What they do is, they stated that most insurance policies that municipalities hold, they have a rule where this is something that can be claimed on insurance and replaced once it's deployed. And they will assist with that. And it's nice that you can do that, because this, this device, a little, little under $1,000. But what's a thousand dollars to save a life or to save somebody's several hundred thousand dollar house?
If I may. Our, our contribution is a little less than $1,000.
These devices are, are actually about 1,200 bucks apiece if you're buying them retail. The nice thing about them is you just pull the pin, you toss it in. The incredible thing about it is this is gonna be a fantastic tool for, for our first responders. Because as some of us know, a, a fire can double in size every 30 seconds. I was just talking with the chief over in Brown, or, well, is in Brown Deer, but it's the North Shore Fire Department. He said that, that, that one could have been recently deployed recently, but they didn't have it yet. We've actually donated one to Brown Deer. We're donating one to Glendale. And that's, that's because you are effectively here in our ancestral home. As you know, we're right across the, across the way from Brown Deer Park, which is, is Glendale. We're very excited about this. This is something that, that we've, the Freemasons have donated about 500 of these throughout the state. And we're very proud to be able to chip in together and, and, and donate this to Glendale. Over 10 have been deployed this year. And two weeks ago, one was deployed up north. It was deployed into a, a home that was a, that was a, a a trailer, and the lady didn't have insurance. But it was tossed in to save that lady's home. It saved her, saved her ability to continue to live there. So otherwise, she would have lost everything. She didn't have insurance. But this sort of device made a gigantic difference, and it's gonna make a big difference now. Every couple of, that, every couple of minutes that are lost are going, means that a, a fire suppression or a fire tool can double, how many times? It's about a four, five, eight times. But when our police officers, who are oftentimes there, as, as much as five to seven minutes before our fire departments are there, they can just pull that pin, toss it in, and then that's gonna be a lot safer for all of our firefighters. The amount of resources that these things are going to save as local communities is incredible. We're proud of it. Thank you very much. We're hoping that you will take a, you'll take a picture with us.
Certainly will.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Ah.
Trust me, they're a little more durable. You go get in there and then we'll.
Oh, okay.
Does someone have the thing to click it, or do I need to?
I just did.
Are you dead? So it's gonna go off?
Three, two, one.
Yep, there you go. Sure. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Yeah, it's awesome. You are always with us.
And I'm so heated on some of this stuff, because I met Ron today.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Yeah. Well, they came from all around the region too. So Jerry had to get back to Madison. They're gonna, okay. Everybody else here, I think, is locals. All right, the next item is the, is the consent agenda, which will be the minutes from our last meeting. Approval of accounts payable and denial of a claim. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard. Move Alderman Gelhard. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second, Valdman Vukovich. Any discussion? Without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda approved. Hearing no objections, we'll move on. Presentations. We have first the presentation from our state representative Darren Madison. I reached out to him a few weeks ago. I know a number of us participated in the town hall, but I actually reached out before the town hall. Said we'd love to have you come and give us a report on how things are going in the legislature. So Representative Madison? Yeah.
My son.
Yeah. So the microphones are kind of tricky. It has to be kind of faced right towards you, kind of aimed right at your mouth and about six inches, eight inches away. Otherwise it won't pick you up.
Let's see.
Perfect. The red light came on. We can hear you.
Perfect.
Good evening Darren, or sorry, Representative Madison.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I don't have my official presentation. But I can go through a bunch of the things that I've been working on over the past. What is it? Five months now? It's been a busy one and a lot of these things, a few of you heard when you came to the town halls that I had the weekend before last. Well, this weekend, before this weekend, but going back through. And thank you for allowing me to be here to this evening and inviting the mayor candidate. So just in general, I am on a few different committees at the, at the Capitol, Children and Families, Workforce Development, and Economic Opportunity, Criminal Justice, and Public Safety, and Corrections. I'm also a part of a series of caucuses and our Wisconsin Black Legislators, Legislators Caucus just met a few hours ago. When we have a Milwaukee delegation briefing on the shared revenue package with the Legislative Physical Bureau tomorrow. I know you guys were asking the, the League of Municipalities folks, a few questions as relates to that. If you guys have some questions tonight for me that I might not be able to answer, I can get those answers for you tomorrow as well. Some I will be able to answer. The shared revenue situation has been very complex and a big, a big matter that has, you know, 30-year implications on, on the entire state if we do it wrong. But back to what I've been working on, the first thing that I came into after being sworn in was a constitutional bail amendment. That was on everyone's ballot. January, right? Our first session was voting on that. If it was going to be on folks' ballot. And why it was, you know, why was it important or why was it concerning? I found more concern than, than benefit of the, of this matter. So I worked with legislators, Chris, Senator Chris Larson, Representative Clancy, a coalition of other stakeholders like ACLU Wisconsin, the community. Black Leaders Organizing Communities Expo and a wide variety of other community groups to author. To both draft and author a bill that directly countered the constitutional bail amendment, understanding that it would pass. Because the way that the questions were written, it was innocuous. It, with the passing of this bill, it would have, it will have dramatic impacts on our correctional system. There will be a substantial amount of folks who will be, you know, will be incarcerated pre-trial. And our correctional systems, our correctional facilities are already over capacity and our jails are, are public defenders and district attorney offices are already understaffed. And this only exasperates those conditions and those measures. And in my correctionals committee, we have been discussing solutions to this problem. Through a variety of factors, whether it's increasing, increasing the amount of pay for correctional officers, whether it's building more correctional facilities, whether it's investing more in our, our public defenders as well as our district attorneys and our courts. And some of those things are moving really slow. Some of those things aren't moving at all. And that's one measure that I've, I've been working on. The bill that we drafted to counter that constitutional bail amendment will be introduced later this year. And then.
Interesting, this, this issue around bail is that we have sent, you know, when people have been arrested and been sent down downtown for, to be processed through the DA's office or held in the House of Corrections, there is no room. I mean, our, there was a time when, you know, our municipal judge used to, used to issue commitments. It wouldn't matter if he issued a commitment because they're not going to take anybody. And so I guess I'm, my question about you, the, this imposition of cash bail is how they're even going to implement it when there's no room in jails to put people anyway. And so that makes me wonder like, what's going to happen to folks? Like they can't be held. You know, I, and so I guess there, there's serious concerns. I obviously, yeah, I obviously understand the concerns around the amendment. But I mean, just looking at now that it's been passed, how, how can you even implement something when there isn't enough space in the jails to hold people?
This was the same question that was brought up on the floor, brought up by the Legislative Liaison for the State Public Defender's Office, Adam Plackin, amongst other folks. That wasn't, you know, when it was brought up, folks said we deal with it when we cross, when we cross that bridge. As opposed to coming up with this solution right now, understanding that, you know, even if we're thinking about pre-child detention. Folks are more willing to, you know, we, we are one, we're over capacity, like you're saying. And two, studies show that folks are more likely to admit to a crime that they didn't commit. Because they've been held for excessive amount of times because they didn't even get the opportunity to get their trials, right? Not even, not only are, are jails over capacity, folks can't, folks are already waiting six months, eight months, a year. To even have, you know, to, to go through their trial. So it's so layered. And, you know, the question, again, the question was written in a way that was like, hey, do you want to hold the most serious offenders accountable? And folks are like, of course. But it didn't give folks the full picture. And we saw even if you look back at the election results, what it was 64, I believe, percent of Glendale voters supported it, right? Without a full picture. And I tried to educate as most, as many folks as possible about it, about all of the factors and it just, you only can do so much, right? But hopefully if the package that we are proposing moves at all. It can help curve some of those layers.
Appreciate the, you know, in your town hall, I noticed you had Representative Gwicky there and he's done some pretty significant criminal justice reforms over the last decade. Partnering with people on the other side of the aisle who are in the majority, he's been able to get through a number of major reforms. And so I'm, I'm glad that you're working with him. Because he, he does have a lot of those connections and has been able to get things through. And, you know, I, I think you're presenting obviously a, a bill that for at least many of us here, you know, we, we understand obviously the complexities of, of some of these issues. Some of us were just in a meeting with the judge the other day because we were talking about new policies written into Glendale's ordinances that will help the judge of our municipal court, because there's just so many ways in which at this point, any of the tools he would have had before, most of them are completely off the table now. And it has to do with the fact that we have so many people in jail in this state that there's nowhere to send anybody. And so, yeah. Well, sorry, I'll let you keep.
No, I you are, you're on point.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. In that same vein, there, you know, Evan has been working for years on the expunishment bill and I'm glad to have been able to come in, in both assists in that fight as well as bring in more advocates to, to engage. And there has, you know, seemingly enough been a lot of bipartisan support as it relates to expanding folks' access to expunishment. Here in the state of Wisconsin, it's been proposed, it's been, in a, every year gets a little bit closer to passing. And there's high hopes for, as in my conversations with Representative Gwicky, high hopes for it to be able to move somewhere this year. And if not, you know, the continuation of, of that fight and gathering more supporters and so on, especially as there is a decent amount of incoming legislators on both sides of the aisle that are interested in collaborating. And we've, as one of the freshman legislators, I've been able to build a lot of relationships with a bunch of the incoming folks. We actually meet monthly to discuss things that we're working on, how we can collaborate and so on. Speaking of which, there has been a proposal that has been submitted to Joint Finance from a few of my Republican colleagues that adds more funding to to our, to IT and robotics programs for public, public, public schools and upward of a million dollars. And I talked to a ranking member on joint finance and that might move somewhere, especially knowing that Nicolae's fear team has made one of the top 30 in the nation. You know, and that's, those are things to be proud of. Those are things to be excited about, especially understanding that if, if Wisconsin wants to be a competitor in the IT world, we have to be preparing the next generation. Let's see. So additionally to that, we've, I've met with the Public Services Commission alongside other black legislators, a part of the Black Legislative Caucus. And to discuss a series of things. How can we address? How can we address our grid? How can we address diversifying the amount of folks who work in our utilities throughout the, throughout the state, whether they be privately owned or municipally, municipally owned? And how can we create a realistic career pipeline for the next generation? The next generation of of folks that, that will be making sure that we keep the lights on, especially coming out of a whole summer where folks were going without power. Throughout the 10th district, right? I remember knocking on doors and hearing folks in Glendale saying, hey, I'm out of power. I remember hearing it in Shorewood. I remember even over the winter, a lot of folks dealing with, with these issues. And We Energies has been doing a lot to try and, try and address this issue. But we've also been looking at legislation to, to actually create these, these systems of support as well.
We're actually in the midst of a dispute with We Energies. We, we filed a complaint with the PSC. And, and they have now agreed to grant us a hearing. So the city of Glendale has had so many outages that if you look back over the last three years, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 2% of the time somewhere in Glendale has been without power. Over the course of a three. And so that led us to file a complaint and it is very rare for a municipality to file a complaint on behalf of its residents. It's usually individuals or companies that file complaints. And usually those complaints have to deal with like rate increases or things of that nature. The fact that we filed one caught the attention of folks at We Energies as well as at the PSC. So they've granted us a hearing, which we're still waiting on that to get scheduled. So. Well, we appreciate the work that you're doing and I guess I'll ask any members of the council have any questions for our state representative? I know three of us had a chance to, or four of us had a chance to quiz you a couple of weeks ago at a town hall. So thank you, by the way, for reaching out and inviting us. I know Alderman Vukovich, Alderman Bailey and Alderman Schmelzling and I were all there. So. Sure. Any, yeah, any questions from any members of the council?
Now, but thank you for, for coming out and doing the town hall. It was great to have you in the fifth district of the city of Glendale at Glen Hills.
And across the street from the sixth district.
But the only residents coming in from the first district.
That's right. The folks who came were all from your district, weren't they?
Representatives from the district there.
That's right.
Okay.
Oh, you did.
Eric. Nonetheless, it's, you know, it lays the foundation for, for collaboration. I believe that one of my philosophies is that, you know, the folks who are closest to the problems are the closest to the solutions. And that's something I carry with me and all the work that I've done throughout my entire life. And, you know, I want it to be, I want to ensure that I was extending my hand forward in collaboration with the city council. Because I know that, you know, folks throughout the state, they don't have the luxury of having amazing folks to lean on for support. And I wanted to make sure I did that early. And I want to make sure that we continue to do that over my time in the legislature so that we can come with, come up with the best solutions for the folks that we all serve.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you coming out and reporting to us tonight and we appreciate the work that you're doing. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right. All right. Thank you, Representative Madison. Next, we have a presentation on fundraising for the North Shore Library and Clerk, did you receive her presentation? She meant it. Perfect. Thank you. I'll need to, sorry, you need to speak directly into the microphone or it doesn't pick.
And I'm so sorry. You've said that like to every person coming up. The first thing I do.
It's funny. We just built a new city hall a few years ago. We get in here in our first couple of meetings, like none of us could hear because we hadn't figured out how to work these mics. These are the worst mics. If anybody was ever rebuilding a city hall, I would say, don't buy these mics. Because if you're not like within about a six to eight inch range, if you're too close or too far away and you're going to speak directly into it, if you tilt it to the side, it doesn't pick you up. So.
It's habit. I just lean in whenever I talk now.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a.
It's just, it's just natural for me.
Even at home.
All right. So we'll let you start over.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. My name is Julie Cotter and I'm with the North Shore Library Project and I'm here with Margaret Zitzer today. Margaret? So I don't know if you want to introduce yourself and then you want to, you've got to.
Jump right into it.
Jump right in. Okay. And we've got this PowerPoint presentation that we'll be going through while the two of us are talking.
Margaret, you're on the North Shore Library Board and a Bayside trustee.
Correct.
Yep. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm also the current treasurer for the library board as well. So the library director, Rhonda Gould, sends her regrets for not being able to be here this evening. She was out ill today. So I've stepped in to help Julie with the update on the Capitol campaign. The North Shore Library Board is super energized with the new direction of the campaign. We are excited to partner up with McDonald Schaefer. They have a lot of experience, help, experience helping nonprofits with their fundraising efforts and have worked on a number of library campaigns. So they bring a lot of successful experience to the table. Since we hired McDonald Schaefer April 1st, we have beefed up our fundraising committee. It is now more robust and motivated than ever. We've secured $1.2 million in additional pledges. We are actively applying for additional grants. And all of our campaign materials have been updated. We are on our way to making the new North Shore Library a reality. Before Julie provides more details on where we are in the fundraising, we'd like to go over a few library metrics and give you an idea of how much our library. Oh, back one. There you go. Thank you. On how much of our, of our library is being utilized. The metrics shown on this slide are from the calendar year 2022. It includes things like numbers of people who visited the library, number of programs offered, number of people who participated in those programs. It also includes how many times patrons use computers, social media followers and website users. The most impressive number on that, on that metrics is the number of items checked out. Over 181,000 items were checked out from our library last year. Amazing. The next few slides are architectural renderings. There you go. Of how the library will work. Rinca is the architectural firm. They have provided the renderings to help us visualize the modern, up-to-date, state-of-the-art, beautiful facility we will have. If you look closely, and you can keep going there, if you look closely, you can see book influences in the design. My personal favorite is the. My personal favorite is the reference desk, which is in the form of a book. If you can see that. It's at the top right. Yep, right there. Now I'll turn it over to Julie Cotter, Campaign Director for McDonald Schaefer, to give an update on where we are with the fundraising so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. So what's the latest? When I got to this project, I wanted to find out a little bit more about it. So the four communities coming together is a really big step, coming up with a new library. And thinking about where you've started, you know, I worked, lived and worked in the area for a long time. So nineteen eighty-six, where the library currently is, doesn't really seem like that long ago. So why do we need a new library? Thinking about who's using it, like Margaret pointed out, you know, seventy-seven thousand visits a year. That's about sixty-five hundred people a month coming into the library. And the library really is a destination. When you think about, you know, are these people coming in by foot? Are they coming in by bike? No, it's usually people coming to the library. You know, car, bus, they're coming in and they want an experience. Maybe it's individual, maybe it's family. And so to be able to offer this is really an amazing opportunity. And so with the capital campaign, it's officially restarted as of April. And what does that mean? Like Margaret said, we had our official campaign kickoff and we're always accepting people for our committee. So I'm looking at any of you. No one's avoiding my eye contact yet, or any of you out there that would like to be a part of our campaign committee. Can you tell I'm in fundraising? But um, we got going again as of April. And so we have a campaign logistics team and this logistics team has some homework. And they were tasked to, okay, we want to recruit people from each of the communities. Who are going to be the right people to sit on this? Who's going to be our cheerleader? Because we really want it to be all-inclusive of the communities that the library is serving. So thinking about that, the committee has just been excellent. We've been um, going from person to person. Hey, what about this person? What about this name? Sandy over here has been making outreach as well. So we really want it to be a community effort. And so our groundbreaking celebration is coming up on Wednesday morning at eleven-thirty. And now this is a bit of an, an, um, and it's, it's not a regular campaign and I'll get into that in a little bit. But the groundbreaking is this Wednesday, if you're interested in joining us. So Campaign Council priorities, what are the priorities right now? So um, reviewing to see what's been accomplished and, you know, I feel like sometimes this group has kind of gotten down on themselves, like, oh, we haven't done enough or we need to do more. There's, there might be negative publicity. The fact that so much work has already been done is incredible, you know, to come in at this point and see what's been assembled. So updating our planning processes, what are going to be our priorities? And in any campaign, the four key fundamentals, volunteer leadership, major donors, communications and campaign infrastructure. And that's really having the right um, forms, pledges, um, back office procedures. So now fundraising process, progress, year-to-date, where are we with the fundraising? So um, I'm going to go through some of these numbers and then just kind of give you a perspective of where this project falls into other categories of, of libraries that we've worked on. So as of right now, the campaign goal is thirteen point eight million. And four point eight million of that is for the building or the shell. Nine million dollars is for the interior of the library. So far, funds raised year-to-date are seven point four million. And that's four point eight million that has been done, the in-kind donation from Bayside Development for the shell. A one million dollar pledge, pledge from the Sharon Lamachia family, to name our children's section. Eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars pledged, but not received at this time. Five hundred thousand dollars from, um, it was a federal government appropriation from Congresswoman Gwen Moore's office. And two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in community donations. And this rep, this number is, is actually a, a big milestone because that's a lot of individual donations that have already come in for this project. When I took a look at the list, it's everything from like five dollars up to ten thousand dollars. So there's already a lot of community support for this project. So our fundraising gap to goal is six point three million. So that's actually, we've, we've raised fifty-four point one percent of the funds so far. Like Margaret had mentioned, we've got two million dollars of other grants in the pipeline. We also have some really large major leadership donor asks, and so those are in process. Um, I'd like to say, we'll wrap those up in the next few weeks, but we'll see. Those things always take a bit of time to finesse. And we would like to add a stretch goal of an additional one million dollars for an endowment. Um, we've seen this happen before with other libraries. The new space is open. Everybody wants to be there and you need money for programming and operations. And we don't want to cut any current program, programming that we have. So we really want to um, add that endowment if possible. So that's, that's where we are at with the fundraising. And now I don't know how this works exactly, but did you guys want to ask any questions about that? Or do you want to wait until the end of the presentation? How does this format typically work? Okay, sounds good. Um, so like I had mentioned before, there's the one million dollar pledge from the Lamachia family. And now a traditional campaign, generally with a traditional campaign, you're going to have your planning phase. You're going to have your quiet phase where you go to your major donors. This is not how this campaign is working at all because of the building donation. So the North Shore Library Campaign is kind of happening all at once. We have our quiet phase happening with our planning, happening with our public phase, happening with our major gift fundraising and our public fundraising. And that does present some challenges, but it's also some opportunities to share who is really using the library. And like Margaret mentioned, there's some incredible statistics out there that we can share that, wow, this is a really well-used, well-loved building. Speaking of well-used and well-loved building, has anyone been to the library recently? Anyone? Yes, see a couple. Okay. So the interior of the library really is crumbling. And when you think about how this project, it, rather than a renovation and an addition, we're, we're running into other library projects around the state that are at least ten million dollars and counting for renovation in addition. And so to get this new space for kind of a discounted rate with private fundraising really bodes well for the community. So our first priorities are major gift fundraising. And that's engaging, asking and securing those major gifts. And typically, major gifts account for ninety percent of a campaign. So who are our major donors? They obviously have the capacity, the interests are charitable. But I take donations of any amount. So if anybody's interested, I have pledge forms with me. And the public phase, it's concurrent. And it's still quiet at this time. We're not going to go full force, public, fa- 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 public phase fundraising. But we are going to start some broad outreach to the community with messaging. So like I had mentioned before, we've got our groundbreaking celebration coming up um, on Wednesday. And then our next steps, this is slide seventeen, so I do apologize. I'm kind of running through these slides so fast. Um, we're going to continue our campaign cabinet recruitment. We're continuing our work with our major prospective donors. We're going to work on some lead donor press releases as big, big gifts come in. And um, the public phase obviously is really kicking off with the um, groundbreaking. So are there any questions about this process, this plan? How are you feeling about it?
I guess the first thing is, I know groundbreaking, that point though, then. Building, it's going to take probably at least a year or so until the shell is up and ready for us to begin any sort of interior work. So I'm assuming that of that six point four million that's still to go, you'd like to have, we'd like to have what, probably five or six, as close to that goal as we can get by a year from now? So that we can start working on the interior and have the funds to pay for those things?
Absolutely. I mean, some of the big gifts that we have in the pipeline right now, potentially they could be wrapped up by the end of the year, which would really, I mean, that would really boost the project. So that's my intent. Um, but sometimes it does take a bit longer when you're working with those types of donors.
I know that when we agreed to come back into the library, one of the commitments that was made uh, at the time was that none of the municipalities would be asked to use taxpayer money for the library. And so that's where it's so important that obviously we want to help and we want, we want you to be successful in what you're doing. Because we've made a commitment to our residents that we won't take any of the Glendale funds or ask Bayside, Fox Point or River Hills to do the same. And so it really does have to all come from the private donations, so. Um, Alderman Schmelzling, you had a question?
Yeah, I was, I had a separate question. I'm going to echo that comment because one of the things we get as, you know, Glendale um, Alders is we're, we're moving the library. And, and that's true, but we're always saying it's going to be something better and it's going to be funded through, you know, not the municipal bonding and such. So it's definitely an important factor of what we've established with our, our residents for what we're doing. Um, I was going to ask, as, as part of this getting a little bit more public, uh, I have seen those same pictures a number of times. Is there a more defined layout that we can start to sink our teeth into, get people rallied around? Because I think that would go a long way in actually making it look more real, especially now that we're breaking ground on the outside. I know that's, that's just the outside for now and the library will follow. But even having something a little bit more firm than conceptual level would go a ways.
Absolutely. And those things are in the works and that's so important for messaging and fundraising, to have more of the schematics, have more of the layout. Um, even when we're, we're constantly working with the designer to find cost efficiencies. So as soon as we get those renderings, I'll pass them along to you. And one of the um, requests we had was we'll keep um, the municipalities all um, posted on the project in real time. So I'll be sending things out that you'll be able to see that all, everyone else is seeing. So you'll have like first, the inside sneak peek on some of those renderings.
Other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so.
Back again.
Thank you. And actually, Margaret, Rhonda was attending virtually. Yeah. Oh goodness. Hope she gets better soon. Thank you. Appreciate it. Right. I'm actually going to ask to take a next item out of a gen, out of order because we do have folks here from um, our accounting firm. Um, so I'd like to go ahead and jump onto the audit. Because the next one's Charlie giving a report and Charlie has to be here anyway, so. So our twenty twenty-one audit has been done and we do have um, Tom from Jefferson Wells and Jake from uh, Clifton Larson Allen, so. All right. Oh, good evening. Thank you for being here and thank you for the work you've done and getting us to the point of getting our twenty twenty-one audit done. And I think we're already well into the twenty twenty-two at this point, too, so.
Yes. And, yeah, I got it on the first try. Um.
PowerPoint. I wonder that one.
Well, I did bring this uh, short PowerPoint here. It's, it's really designed to be high level and allow you guys to ask the detailed questions you have. Um, you do have all the detailed final documents already provided to you. Uh, we completed our audit early April um, and have provided all those signed, sealed and delivered uh, documents as well. So this is really just kind of a, a very high-level summary, um, but happy to talk through any of the details as we go. Uh, did just want to, for today, um, just give a little bit of back, background again with related to CLA as your auditors and kind of what that role is in the process. And then talk through the audit results and then any of the um, kind of upcoming planning things, as you mentioned, Mayor, on the twenty twenty-two audit, the things that'll be relevant kind of going forward. So if you could move to the next one. Just very briefly, I, I did put a few data points in here about CLA and our involvement in auditing municipalities here in Wisconsin. Uh, this is our second year working with the city in this, in this um, capacity. And uh, we're here about three months earlier than last time we were here together. But um, as, as we're talking about twenty twenty-two, really looking to um, accelerate that timeline even further and start to bring into what's more of what I would call a typical close timeline. Uh, so I, I'll touch on that a little bit uh, towards the end here, but um, my, my entire practice is working with municipalities across the state. Uh, as a, as a CLA firm, we work with about five hundred municipalities in the state. Um, and over forty-five hundred across the country. So this is um, very much our bread and butter, so to speak, in terms of, of what uh, the type of work we work with. Our team is, is focused on working with municipalities and that allows us to do things efficiently. Um, and to, and to help in terms of uh, best practices or when um, when a municipality i- is in need of assistance, that it gives it a little bit more of that uh, industry context to, to the information you have. Uh, I won't go through a bunch of detail about myself or, or my staff. Um, but again, uh, we're, we're focused in this business. Um, and over my past twenty years, it's, it's all been in the municipal uh, space. So um, that's kind of the context I bring to the discussion here. If, if there's things where we see best practices or things where you can see some efficiencies, we certainly want to bring those forward as part of the audit process. So just moving into some of the actual audit results. Um, so as it relates to the two thousand twenty-one audit, I do have a little bit of summary information here for you in relation to uh, the estimates included in the audit. This first portion of our um, required communications is very boilerplate, I would say. And, and that's a good thing um, from the standpoint of the accounting estimates, the methodologies that you use to prepare the financial statements that um, that go into uh, creating those estimates. They're very consistent with what we'd expect to see uh, in municipal accounting. Um, they're consistent with GAAP and GASB. They are uh, consistent with your historical results. So we did not have significant uh, recommendations in terms of the methodologies and the assumptions that are used when, when preparing those financial statements. The, the next slide again has, has some additional information that's, that's a little bit boilerplate. But the one thing I did want to highlight here i- is included in your detailed documents were uh, the number of adjustments that were um, required to be posted after we had begun our work. Um, so typically you want that list to be very minimal. Um, because what that's a symbol of is the financial information that you're receiving throughout the year. You want that to really be consistent with what then as a third party, we're reviewing and agreeing to invoice support, additional support, those types of things. So um, a little bit later, I have in our slides, we have a recommendation related to that timeliness of that cleanup. And we talk about accelerating the audit timeline. That would really help in terms of reducing the number of adjustments that are posted after we be- begin our work. So we do provide you a copy of all of those entries, just so you have a little bit of an understanding of the context and the progression of the audit. Um, and just kind of be aware that what that really means is that additional cleanup is happening fairly late in the game. Because by the time we're performing our work, it's really, you know, I mean, we, we began our audit procedures in um, early two thousand twenty-three here. Um, and we adjustments post, post that. The, the uh, remainder of the uh, communications here really deal with um, a- any type of additional assistance we provide. Um, we do note um, the, the assistance that Jefferson Wells provided the city in terms of being able to bring the audit process to close. Not really from us, the standpoint of, you know, a, a technical um, discrepancy or any kind of disagreements that way, but just more sort of horsepower, if you will, uh, in, in terms of bringing. discrepancy or any kind of disagreements that way, but just more sort of horsepower, if you will, in terms of bringing the audit to close. So that is new this year. This is our first year working with Jefferson Wells in that capacity. And so we, we do note that from the standpoint of just your awareness over the overall audit process. The, the other document that we issue as a result of the audit is the management letter. And I mentioned briefly in, in kind of the tee up comments here that we're really making that recommendation again for the second time related to the timeliness of, of the financial reporting and the cleanup process. So as I mentioned, we, we did see a three month improvement, but have, have goals to accelerate that further, both with your management team as well as for, for our audit process.
I just wanted to know, what would you see as a best practice timeline?
Um, I would point to the GFOA's industry recommendation of being complete by six months after year end. That's, that's.
That seems long to me.
It does. I mean, you are doing, it is a complex process. There is certain things that can only be done somewhat at the end of the, at the end of the process. The sooner the better. When you submit, if you were to submit for a review by the GFOA of your financial information for purposes of receiving the GFOA certificate, they would not award that if you extended beyond that six month period without a approved extension with circumstances noted. So.
It's a good target for us to get to that problem. I mean, let's.
Yes. And then.
Thank you.
Beyond that, we did note as part of that financial close process, we were asked to assist with preparing the financial statements. That's not uncommon for us to do. But it is something you should be aware of that as your auditors, we're also helping with that final preparation of the financial statement document. Just for, for point of reference, really. And then finally, just we, we noted this in the past and the amount of vacancies and then turnover and position changes within the overall finance accounting space at the city. It, it's hard to know how well the controls are working from the standpoint of you had to all kind of lean in, the, the management team really had to lean in and kind of help each other work through various reconciliations and year end close. So it's just again, something to keep in mind as you do have a strong set of policies and procedures in place. When you're, when you're dealing with a lot of vacancies and, and turnover, it's difficult for the people that are in those seats to be performing those tasks on a consistent basis.
No, we had the departure of our finance director. We have posted for the position and I was just reading through the description. I actually have to film a video tomorrow inviting people to apply for it. And one of the things I noticed in terms of we do want somebody who is fully capable of producing all of those financial statements at the end of the year, so that future audits, the comments you've made about having to help prepare those financial statements won't be comments you'll make hopefully when you're doing the 2023 audit a year from now. So.
That, that is ideal. It is a very scarce market at the moment. I think five of the top 10 cities in the country in terms of low unemployment are in Wisconsin. It's below 2% in, in terms of the unemployment rate. It is hard to find folks in, to be in many different capacities are, we are seeing it across the board within our client base, within the municipal of finance role. It's a difficult role to find. I don't say that for in a, a Debbie downer, so to speak. But I think, you know, to have sort of that interim assistance along the way while you're performing that search, so you can give yourself the time to find the right person is important.
And in addition to the work from Jefferson Wells, our search firm, Public Administration Associates, PAA, has also provided us with a part-time finance director. So we do have these two, two contract, two contractors who are essentially helping us with this process. So. But yeah, thank you for the work that you've done and thank you for raising these concerns and they are not concerns that at least the city administrator and I are certainly aware of because as, you know, putting together this job description, these are some of the things we wanted to make sure were, were handled. I believe many others up here have had similar concerns with, in past years with past audits. So. Yeah.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that we had a very, or an extremely tight timeline in getting the 2021 audit completed. We had borrowing that was required for the new fire building right here in Glendale. And a big thank you needs to go out to the two gentlemen and their team from both Jefferson Wells and CLA without them working nights, weekends, holidays. I don't think we would, I know we would not have met our deadline. In addition to that, we had a lot of staff members who did a lot of stuff that was unfamiliar with them. They were required or we asked them to go outside of their realm of responsibility and comfort. And everybody exceeded at doing that and working harder and doing things they normally wouldn't have done. So without the big team that we have here with Jessica and Charlie and everyone else of our staff, we would not have met the deadline that was set for us. So just a big thank you to everybody. So, thank you.
I'm just, I know I interrupted you with questions. Is that your last slide or were you, did you have more?
I'll just brief. I'd got a going next year. We'll have some additional financial reporting requirements as it relates to any long-term leases that you have in place, both on the, on the, on the receeding side and the payable side. So there is going to be a little bit more to bringing that to close and we'll begin. Object number one is getting, making sure you're good on your state report here in the next eight days. And then priority number two is the reestablishing the financial close timeline for 22. And so we'll be working with your team to, to make sure we address the new standards as well as bring things to close as well.
I do have a question for you. Just, just my own curiosity here. The North Shore Library is currently in a space that the city of Glendale owns. They have a lease that has 14 more years left on the lease. They pay us a dollar a year. But because we own the asset, is that one of those kind of things that you're going to, in terms of leases here? Is that one of the things that's going to become a part of our audit next year?
We'll be asking you for some info on that.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting. Any other questions from comments from folks?
You know, your efforts not, not a, has not been a standard operation working with us. And I appreciate the extra effort you guys have put in to do it. Thank you.
Have a deadline for the 2022 audit as well. Obviously we want that completed well before the end of 2023. So we can start off 2023 in a good position. I think our goal is September, October to be completed with 2022. Is that correct?
We, we started into that already, but we're just not, we're looking at September to finish. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we are what? 20% done?
Yeah, essentially what I was able to do is take the 2021 list, knowing that there's going to be a lot of carryover items and assign ownership and basically an idea of are there things out there that we can immediately pull that I know are available? And so I'm able to track that and see the progress on a daily or weekly basis, share that with Carl. And yeah, we're right, just a hair over 20% right now of the items that we've pulled. Big focus was on cash, AR, AP to the sub ledgers and then pulling together some of the fixed asset information.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for the audit presentation. Thank you for your hard work as well and helping get our audit done and meeting that incredibly tight timeline we had in order to be able to borrow on behalf of the fire department. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Back to one more presentation. This is snow and ice control operations. Snow zone for the year? I don't know. Why did you do that? Brain now, right? All right. Typically this has not have been a presentation for me in the past. Do I have something? I do. I do. Thank you, Administrator Warwick. So I am recapping our 2023, 22, snow and ice, kind of a quick high level. You all have seen the, the metrics, I think, but we did actually have 16 events this year as compared to 22 last year. It was down in events, but not in accumulation. So we actually were pretty far up on accumulation, just bigger events, less of them, but certainly requires a lot of our time and typically I think the full scale events are 12 to about 30 hours. We were pretty close a couple of times to 30 hour events this year. So it's, it's a lot for our, our 12 staff to handle. So our 12 routes, one of those is alley routes. We've been taking care of the alleys, I think for about four years now. We brought that back in house. So that is all of, all of our DPW staff. Some of them were just salting operations and I think really I'm going to get to that kind of as we get further down here is the brine. I mean, no question, our brine operations has, has saved us, I think, as far as overtime assault. I mean, just all in all, it's just, it's been fantastic. Obviously we came back to you all again for a quest to get a bigger brine maker because we're, we're now at about 137,000 gallons. We've started the first year, we had 23,000. So that was three years ago. It kind of tells you how far we've come with that. And like I said, I can't say enough about it. We've got a lot of buy-in, obviously. From staff, but certainly residents as well. I think there's a little skepticism upfront with that, but it's now it's well received and you know, you can, you see it. I mean, you, you drive the roads in winter and I think, I think they're in very, very passable conditions this year, obviously with construction. We've had some issues, but I think we did pretty well on a little bit district, but that's where the ground zero is, so to speak. But our operator, Will Getting certainly got out ahead of time and knew where the barricades and traffic control and everything else, plates and everything else he had to dodge. So we did pretty well. A question in the past when we used to salt the roads right before the snow would come. Is brining the roads, is it more effective and is it cheaper or is it neither or both? Or just curious? Yes, to all. It is cheaper. It is better. It's, I think I equated it maybe a couple of years ago to like spam nonstick. You put it down on the roads and you know, the, the, it'll, it'll probably eat about maybe an inch of snow. And then obviously once it starts accumulating, but the compact snow of years ago where it's just ice and it gets traveled over and you just can't get the stuff off till, you know, June. This definitely works in that regard. And I think it, it just, we, we actually pre-wet with it too. So even the salt going down does have brine on it. So it starts working faster. It doesn't scatter across the road anymore into the gutters or whatever. It stays where we put it. And yeah, I just, again, I can't say enough about it. In fact, we're, we were working with River Hills with that. They're using brine now. So we're making for them. We've kind of got, got an agreement with them, working on that. And then certainly with River, Nicolay School as well. So we're helping them out too. So again, we're down in salt. So salt, like I think I said that before was down probably seven, $7 a ton. So it was 69, which nothing ever goes down. So I couldn't quite believe that, but it's true. So I anticipate, I think this next year it's going to be probably about 75, $75 a ton. And considering that we're at 15, 1500, but now we're looking at 1,000. So again, less, less salt using and, and certainly with the roads and things like that too. So. My time up? I'll be quick. So anyway, yeah, just kind of miles driven, things like that. I think this is all important metrics for all of y'all to see, just to know that we're covering a lot of territory and certainly with the, the brine, that makes a big difference. Mailboxes were up this year. We didn't really do a lot last year. It just was one of those things. And again, we tried to get out, I know we've talked to Alderman Schmelzing about this as well. And we, we do, we put in all of our newsletters, our winter and spring and things like that to give residents a heads up. We're not hitting them with the plows, just to be clear. It's the snow being pushed by the plows. So that does, if you've got a weak mailbox post, it's going to go down. We certainly put it, replace it with a temporary one until spring, then we could put a new one. And so just something again to, to highlight and let you know. The plow drivers aren't actually hitting the mailboxes. No, 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 we don't hit them. Just the wall of snow and ice. It's the wall of snow. And again, that's, it's kind of deceiving too. I mean, I've, I've driven behind our guys and watched them, our crew, and they're probably going maybe 10, 15 miles an hour. You know, sometimes it looks like they're flying because the snow goes off it, but that's just coming off the plow blade. That looks like it's, it's, it's being thrown pretty quickly, but. That's really about it. I think at this point I will take questions. If there are any. Any questions?
Maybe not a question, just some discussion. So one thing I brought up just for everybody's purview is the, the mailboxes. So I know my neighbor across the street, he, in the time that I've been alderman, I've taken notice it got knocked over and the one next door to me got knocked over. Mine's metal, so it's in good shape. So I got a good one. But something that I, I noticed that Bayside is doing is they're doing a mailbox, kind of like maintenance program where people can pay money and they'll get their mailbox fixed. And they've actually put as kind of a nuisance property maintenance. If your mailbox is in bad shape, you kind of have to get it fixed. Otherwise the city doesn't want to knock them over and have to pay for them. So I did some quick math. Bayside somehow charges $200 for that and it costs us about 300 bucks to fix them ourselves. So a little bit of preventative maintenance. No, it's not a lot. Like we had a 14 or something I saw this year. But if, if there's any like looking for shared services, mailbox replacement with Bayside potentially, or whatever vendor they use, it might save us a few dollars and make our, you know, mailboxes look a lot better. Cause I know a lot of them are just tipping over when I drive around and do stuff with the scouts. So just a thought there. If anyone had any feedback or they think that might be a good idea.
I did notice here on your latest, on the slide that just came up, ride along request. We can really ride along. That was my last question. Absolutely.
That sounds like.
So here's the deal. You will get called at 2:30 in the morning when we start snowing. Just know, we have had, I've gone out before when I first started, actually we took out Jessica, I think last year. So she went out with, with one of our operators, but in all seriousness, I, it's, I, not that I didn't have appreciation, but when I'm out there bouncing around, in fact, I went out during one of the day operations on Silver Spring with one of our newer trucks and it's actually nice and Alderman Dory, the air ride seats are pretty, pretty comfy, but our, our guys do bounce around, but yeah, so the offer is out there. So if you want to, you know, kind of connect with me offline or whatever and, and do that, we certainly will offer that, offer that, extend that. Extend that to any of you. We got hopefully knock on wood, like eight or nine, eight months or so before we have to think about it again. So. Definitely. Probably more like six, but.
We can't drive the truck, can we?
Cannot drive the truck, but you can sit in the passenger seat. It's like when you go out on a police or a fire ride along, you don't get to drive. We don't have fun stuff like the police have, but. Yeah.
What if you have your CDL license?
Still no. Still got to be covered by a truck. Yeah. All right. Again, I appreciate your time with this. And as I usually do in November, that's, that's more of a consistent, this, this wrap up has been only a couple of years and we missed it last year because of the changing of the guard, but I plan on going, continue with this. And November is the opportunity for all of you to weigh in on our current snow and ice procedures and policies. And if there's any, anything you want to make or change, we can do that at that point. But this, again, this is a wrap up for the season.
I don't think I got one complaint this year. I can't think of one. Maybe I'm just not putting it in my mind, but I didn't get one complaint from people about stuff getting knocked over or.
Not either.
Yes.
We have an audio message that we'll play for you after this that you'll find humorous. So.
Oh, they got one text complaint from me. I have an 80 some year old neighbor across the street from me and I just helped him dig out his, his driveway and the plows came through and plowed him back in. And then when I went over and helped him dig out again and the plows came through again, it's like, how many times? We do try to avoid and to that point, Mayor is that we, we know we have a long nighter coming. We're, we'll go down the middle. So that residents know that we're not finished. So we can keep it open for police and fire. We can keep it open for residents to get it out, but invariably that does happen and we try to avoid that. But yeah, it's just one of those things that it's, it's unfortunate, but.
Fortunately our plow driver in subdivision I'm in, I let him know when you're, you just finished shoveling.
Oh, thanks. This, you know, I think Dennis, Dennis Fisher actually recognized him for helping the, the woman that they found on Silver Spring. That I would say he has the hardest route. It's, it's pretty tough and you're in. Uh, that I would say he has the hardest route. It, it's, it's pretty tough in, in, in Crestwood, just with cars parked. And the narrow areas that, uh, it's, he's pretty skilled and he's been doing it for, I think, 18 years now, so it's. But we're all lucky. I think you all have pretty well seasoned, uh, uh, operators in your neighborhood, so. Any complaints, let me know. But yeah, I think we've been doing a pretty good job so far. Thank you. All right, move on now to the rest of our new business. First, the proclamation proclaiming May as Bike Month in the city of Glendale. Well, by the way, all of these memos say they are from me. I reminded Carl that usually they're from him. So it was a template he was using and so. I am not the one that brought this forward, so I think Carl did, didn't you? This came from you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We noticed, uh, that May is, uh, Bike Month and wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. We have a lot of bike trails, bike paths. And a lot of people who bike in Glendale. I can say that the weather deters some people from biking, but it does not stop people from biking in Glendale. There are people out there almost every day biking, including I saw today driving. There were people biking. And I'm looking at them and thinking they're a little crazy. But the people are out there, they're biking, so the proclamation would declare May as National Bike Month, including, um, proclamation encouraging people. To bike to work on May 19th. We're going to make it a requirement here at the city hall. So, uh, Megan, you have to bike from. The south side of Milwaukee all the way up to Glendale.
Jessica's in a bike from Oak Creek. Charlie, you're coming from what? Thiensville? It's close. You just come down the trail.
Yeah. All right. So we do have a, a proclamation. Can I get a, a motion to? I can move bottom and Doherty, second bottom and Schmelzing. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, I? Those know, motion carries, proclamation is adopted. Uh, we did be, move on to C, recommendation of the Legislative Judiciary and Finance Committee for approval of a change of agent for the Cheesecake Factory.
Um, sorry, audit? You skipped one.
We did the audit already.
You didn't make a motion on it.
We don't do a motion. It, it is, and actually by, by state statute, we are required to do an audit. There is no requirement to accept it. It is done. We, it's presented to us and goes on record as public record.
I moved to place the piece of information on file.
Okay, you can move to place it on file, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Vukovich, place on file. All those in favor placing the audit on file, say aye. Those know, motion carries. Yeah. Eight years I've been mayor, we've never done a motion about the, the audit.
I was mayor, we did.
Really?
Yes, sir.
It's never been one of our memos for the last. All right. All right, change of agent for the Cheesecake Factory. Committee met right before this. Is that from the clerk or is that from the chair?
The legislative committee, uh, L and J and whatever the heck it's called. Has a, a motion to approve and put forth the recommendation to approve the cheesecake factory change.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion then?
That was it.
Oh, it's moved by then, moved by Shaw, second by Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those know. Carries, it is approved. All right, uh, next is authorization to execute an agreement with Blaze Landscaping.
Point of order.
Right.
We, we still got to do the motion and the approval for the fire suppression. We never got to that.
That's because of the donation and we have to put, approve that we've received a donation.
I didn't do the motion when we did it. Oh. I thought I did the motion.
I thought we'd just do it here, so.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the fire suppression tool?
So moved.
Second.
By Shaw or moved by Schmelzing, seconded by Shaw. Um, all those in favor approving, I? Those know, motion carries. Next, authorization to execute agreement with Blaze Landscaping for demolition of 6130 North Sunny Point, not to exceed 20,000.
Second.
Okay.
We already know what this is.
We also have a motion to approve for the demolition of 41, 4118 Hubbard, not to exceed 28,000. We have the total cost in there. The cost for the demolition of the Sunny Point property will be 100% reimbursed by MMSD. That is the city paying for it and industrial area to the south of the city that will hopefully be redeveloped at one point. At the motion on 6130 and it has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Those know, motion carries. Alderman Vukovich, which likes to move 4118 Hubbard.
I would.
Thank you, seconded by Shaw. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye? Those know, motion carries. You're moving right along. Okay, the next item is one I asked to have put on the agenda. Um, when the library, uh, agreement was approved almost two years ago, I think it was August or September, almost two years ago. Well, the, the, one of the things that was missed in that agreement. There is a requirement by state statute that the superintendent or representative of the superintendent of schools must be on the library board. The superintendent was not mentioned in the agreement. Considering it was a little contentious when we got it approved, I mentioned to Rachel and she goes, oh, we don't want to bring that back right now. So I just took one of our four seats and I appointed the superintendent who is a Glendale resident. But we gave up one of our seats for almost two years. We're supposed to have four and then the superintendent is an extra. So I asked now. Uh, if we could have this come back so Glendale can actually reclaim its fourth seat. So we will appoint. Uh, Dr. Kabara, as long as the library is still in Glendale and at that point, he or whoever is the superintendent will be appointed by Bayside. Uh, it has to be by state statute. It has to, if you have a union high school district. And the communities that are part of the library are the high school district, then it has to be Nicolet. So like Bayside can't decide to make it. Somebody from the Fox Point Bayside School District or somebody from Mapledale. It has to be from Nicolay. So, um, the agreement before us is essentially clearing up that and then a couple of other minor language changes. Nothing is substantive and they really have to do with the fact that several aspects of the original agreement were out of compliance with state statutes. This being the biggest one, but I asked to bring it forward now so that we can get our extra seat back. Thank you. Move by Shaw.
Second.
Second by Doherty. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the amended and restated library agreement, please say aye. Those know, motion carries. Uh, next, resolution confirming obligation to contribute to the North Shore Fire Department's budget. To pay debt service on bonds issued by the city of Glendale on behalf of the North Shore Fire Department. This is the same agreement that all seven communities have to, at least the majority of their boards have to pass. Basically says Glendale borrowed a bunch of money. Well, we're willing to pay Glendale, Glendale share, but based on the formula, the other communities have to pass it to, so. Um, any discussion? Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I moved.
Thank you. Move by Shaw. Seconded by Bailey. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Schmelzing.
So do we need to like come back later and approve that we're going to pay the debt?
That's what this is.
Oh, yes, I'm just. Thank you. No, no discussion.
All right. Yeah. All right, all those in favor, say aye? Opposed, motion carries. Next, Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports. I'll start with, uh, Captain Fugman. Anything for the police department?
I've anything.
Okay. Chief didn't tell you, you have to give a report.
He did not.
Then tonight, the attorney. All right, number one. Number two.
Nothing to report tonight.
Number three.
Nothing this evening.
Number four.
Nothing this evening.
Five.
Very quickly, the 4th of July, we really need people to sign up. There's a signup genius, so please go out there and do that because otherwise. You know, it's, it's fun to serve beer to your constituents and serve your constituents in general, so, um, get the word out there and we do need volunteers. Even with the reduced hours that we have today. That's pretty much it. We got some food vendors coming in. Elite Fitness is going to be having the bouncy houses. Um, a lot of good things coming together. Great help from. Jessica and Heather, our food vendor volunteer. So, um, just need people to sign up. Thank you.
All right, number six.
I think no music in the gun, but I will say we will be meeting next week, Wednesday the 17th at 5:00 PM at City Hall in the conference room next to the city administrator's office. Please put it in the calendar.
Thank you, I'm doing that right now. All right, and I just have, uh, two quick things from the ICC meeting today, or actually, sorry, one from MMSD, one from the ICC. Jerry was here and gave you a report. He did however, have a nice three-page memo that I will scan and send out to everybody that explains the shared revenue bill in a little more detail. Um, I will do that when I get home. Um, and then the other thing was at the MMSD this morning, one of the things that we approved was the Clutch Park Dam Repair and Fish Passage Construction. The contract was for 1.62 million dollars was reward, was awarded to Preparo Incorporated. They will be doing all of the work that they've already explained to us in past presentations. And the beautiful thing I learned this morning is that it's entirely funded by outside sources. The Fund for Lake Michigan and the DNR's, um, municipal dam grant program will be. Yep, we'll be working on those, uh. Uh, will be what pays for that project. So that was awarded this morning. We will see construction. Uh, on the east side of the river, building the fish passage this year will be done by the end of the year. So that is my report. And I can tell that Alderman Vukovich wants to motion to adjourn it.
Moved.
Thank you, John, Alderman Gelhart just seconded. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye? Opposed, we stand adjourned at 7:41.